Okay folks, we're going to all the meetings order. And we're going to start with the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It works fine.
Alright. Okay, we have President Phillips. Treasurer, zoning administrator, Mahal. Kirk Saunders is here, the councilman of the Bureau. Gaffier. Lucas. Shrek. Mumble. Work. Member of the planning commission, Marcy Coles. Christine Skew is here. We have Cynthia, zoning chairman, planning and zoning chairman, Mary Russell. And I'm just...
Okay, we have some ground rules for the evening, so that we don't repeat ourselves and we're respectful of the other folks that are here tonight. So I'm going to let our attorney, Matt, start this out, and then he'll turn it back over to me and I got a couple housekeeping bits after that.
Hi, everybody, and I want to welcome you here. I think everyone in the world, everyone on this table would agree that local government works best when members of the public tongue participate, hear, and contribute. It allows the council to hear your thoughts and it allows the council to make the best and most informed decision that they can. And tonight, we want to hear from everyone that wants to speak. But I think everyone hears best when public comment is done in an orderly manner. So we will not be tolerating any disruptions here tonight. We know that emotions are high on a number of issues in the community. But we ask that we all treat each other with courtesy and respect. With regard to the procedure for public comments tonight, we have a podium over here set up, and there's obviously a microphone here. That is where public comment will take place. So if you wish to make public comment, you'll want to go up to that podium and speak from there. When you approach the podium, please begin by giving your name and where you live. And importantly, if you reside within the village limits or own business within the village limits, please identify that as well. We certainly welcome comments from everyone, but it's helpful for us to know this information. As you may know, public comment is limited to three minutes per person. We'll be keeping track of the time and we'll keep you informed as time nears its end. Just as an aside, you can't make bank minutes or donate minutes to someone else. Each speaker gets three minutes and three minutes only. And in order to make sure everyone gets their full three minutes, we would ask that you avoid any interruptions of someone while they're speaking. And we're going to try to have no back and forth possible between council members and the public. Instead, questions that you may pose during a public comment will be written down and addressed following the close of public comment. Our plan here tonight, if you've seen the agenda, is to conduct the public hearing. And once the public comment is closed, there will be the comments from various individuals and from the council. At the next regular meeting, there will be further deliberations and ultimately a vote on the issue immediately. As a practical matter, council is going to be here more, be able to hear more ideas and a greater variety of ideas if we avoid redundancy. And so if you hear something from someone else that's making public comments tonight through you, it might be best to mention your agreement and then move on to other points rather than repeating what others have said. Lastly, I want to address the issue of recording. I know there are those that are recording here tonight, and that's okay. We're interested in public access to information of what's happening here. I would only caution you or anyone else that happens to be recording that you not edit the video or do anything to take things out of context or present anyone's position in a way other than what is fair and accurate. You would take it seriously if there were any editing to misrepresent what happens here tonight. With that, I'll turn things over to Sheila for the kind of... Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. The first thing, I would like to thank Northeastern Window and Door for allowing us to use the chairs this evening, and Marcia and Linda for going and picking them up, and everybody else here that assisted in getting things set up this evening. Billy for moving the fire trucks out. And then also for the sound system, I would like to thank Larry and Kyle Apsey. Kyle is the young man over here that's working the sound system for us. So we want to thank them for allowing us to use their sound system. Makes it a lot easier for everybody to hear. So with that being said, we're going to open with public comment. And who would like to be first? Don't everybody jump over us.
Terry Vanuck, resident Mitchell Township. I just wanted to say I understand this hotbed issue important tonight. And it's tough sometimes doing the right thing. Sometimes the situations or things are said. You know, the hard part, and I've been there, you have been here before you are now, is just standing up and doing what your conscience tells you to do. Don't want anything else in front of us. And if you do the right thing, people will stand with you. That's all I had to say.
One thing that I did miss in saying is this evening, it is about a zoning ordinance. It is not about any particular organization that may be considering doing a project in the village. It is strictly about the village and the village ordinance only. So just in case anybody's thinking about bringing other groups or organizations into their comments, please don't. Be respectful of the village council and what we have to do. So, because it is about our ordinance for the people who live here in the village.
Do you qualify exactly the ordinance to change tomorrow?
Yes, on behalf of... Oh, that's what I didn't do, Kathy. Thank you. I have a paper prepared. I'm going to read you the intent of the B-1 district. I appreciate that, Kathy. The general business district is designated to provide convenience and diversify day-to-day retail shopping and service facilities for passerby traffic as well as for persons residing in adjacent residential areas. The district is intended to result in a minimum impact upon the residential property uses located within the district typically generated that generate higher traffic. So that's the intent of the district that we're talking about. And for those of you who have a map... Not there yet. If you have the map... The map, there is red areas within the village. The red areas are the B-1 district. It's scattered all over the village. It's not just one place. And please be mindful that the people who bought in those B-1 districts, they know what they can and cannot do with their property. And this would allow them an opportunity to do something else that should present itself. And that's what we're looking at. Now, I'm also going to read the definitions of the things that we are talking about. And if you want to find this, if you're on the internet, you can go to LincolnMichigan.com. And our whole zoning ordinance is online. So we're very public with it. We want to make sure people know where they're at and why. When they're buying their property. And what they can and can't do with it. So the first one is apartment. And this is allowed use within the village. The term apartment shall mean the dwelling unit in a multiple dwelling as defined herein. Efficiency unit. A dwelling unit consisting of not more than one room in addition to kitchen, dining, and necessary sanitary facilities. And for the purpose of considering density shall be considered as a one-room unit. Okay, that's efficiency. Two-bedroom unit. A dwelling unit consisting of not more than two bedrooms, yeah, two rooms, excuse me, in addition to a kitchen, dining, and necessary sanitary facilities. For the purpose of computing density, it shall be considered a two-room unit. A two-bedroom unit. A dwelling consisting of not more than three rooms in addition to the kitchen, dining, and necessary sanitary facilities. For the purpose of computing density, this shall be considered a three-room unit. Three or more bedroom unit. A dwelling unit for each room in addition... A dwelling unit wherein, for each room in addition to three rooms permitted in a two-room unit and for the purpose of computing density, said there, three-bedroom unit shall be considered a four-room unit. And each increase in bedroom over three units shall be an increase in the room count by one and over four. That is allowed in the village already, in the B-1 district. Okay? Now... Okay, this is the one that is kind of fun. Dwelling, multiple family. A building or a portion thereof designed exclusively for occupancy by three or more families living independently of each other. Now, when you think about that, that really kind of encompasses a lot of different things, but it's very vague about what things it encompasses. Okay? So now, the two words that we want to add to this section, and I'm the mini of you now. A portion of the condominium project designed and intended for separate ownership and use as described in the master deed and is a parcel of land occupied or intended to be occupied by a main building or a group of such buildings and accessory buildings or utilize the principal use and uses of the accessory there too together with such yards and open spaces as are required under the provision of this ordinance. A lot may or may not be specifically designed as such on public record. A lot shall mean that the same as homestead and condominium unit in site condominium development. And just for the record, State of Michigan Public Act 59, Public Acts 1970/80 addresses condominiums specifically in the law. So that's where we came up with what is in our plan. It's based on what the law says. If anybody wants to go in and look that up, you're simply welcome to. And last, and I knew this was going a little controversial, townhouses. A row of three or more attached one-family dwellings. Not more than two and one-half stories in height and for which there is an entrance to each dwelling on the ground floor. A townhouse shall not be used as a synonym for the term condominium, which refers to how a property or space is owned rather than a particular housing style. So it's the last two, the townhouses and condominiums, that seem to be in question. And we are looking for advice from the community as to whether we think those options are good in the B-1 district. So with that being said, I think we're ready now to move on to the second public comment. Anybody? And remember, we already have multi-family dwellings and we have apartments in the village. So there's not a lot of difference.
My name is Terry Goldstrom. My concern with the rezoning is basically the... Amount of... From our decent fire department, our paramedics, do we have enough people already on board? If we go ahead and build condominiums or townhouses, whatever you want to call it, are we going to have enough people to cover this without putting any more pressure on the rest of the community? Because we only have two ambulances. I mean, and they're pretty much spread spaced out. I do live in the village of Lincoln, and this is one of my major concerns about this. Thank you.
Thank you. Next. Come on, I know there's got to be somebody else that wants to talk. It is, had all of the pieces of public comment... Ah, everybody's like... I don't want to close it without giving everybody an opportunity to talk, but I'm not going to talk, I'll close it.
Hi, y'all doing? My name is Nicholas Goldstrom. I live in Lincoln. I do have a concern before we were talking about septic. That we were already at max capacity in this country. So if we go ahead and we have, God knows, townhouses put in, how much more of a cost are we going to be adding to the village on that? That's a concern for me. Also, like was already stated too, fire, police, ambulances, just basic structure for this area. Who's going to pay for that as well? We got people already, and there's no pay taxes. I pay taxes. So when we get to public awareness, I'm paying. And the rest of everybody else, you know, that is paying their taxes. It's concerning. That's all I got to say. Thank you. No, just Lincoln.
We're just trying to clarify where everybody's actually from, so we can compute when the council starts deliberating. Next, I know there's some folks in the village who, you guys have an opinion. Don't be shy. You haven't been shy before.
I have just a question.
My name is Kirk Bell, and I do live in the village. I guess my question is, if this zoning is for a specific project, does the entire B-1 have to be rezoned? Or can a specific lot, or two lots, or ten lots be rezoned? That's my question.
It's not actually for a specific project. It's a question of whether the entire B-1 should be changed to affect that. Yep.
It's called spot zoning when you do that. And we're looking at 20 years from now, not just today. And how will these changes affect the village 20, 30 years from now? And that's why spot zoning is not a good thing to do. You have these areas, and if you're going to do it, you do it to the whole thing, you don't do it to part of it. So that we keep consistency. So... Next. Please don't make me close this already. We went through a lot of trouble to make sure your folks could all be heard. Please come talk.
I think most people are waiting to hear from me.
According to the map... Oh, not that.
I'm Liz Conley. We live in town here. And looking at the map, when you're talking about spot zoning, why are there red little areas here and there and not in one major section? Like for instance, on Jordan and Second, there's one little corner that's B-1. In the midst of residential. So that's a question. So if you don't want to do spot zoning, and why...
I wasn't there when they actually put the plan together. That was before my time. And I am assuming those red spots have businesses in them? Or a business there?
And pre-dated zoning ordinance?
Pre-dated. So I do not have 41 on these. And we have a four lots, we have a whole summer dump lot. So if I wanted to put a little business, I couldn't leave it all on 41.
Which district are you in? Okay. It could be mixed use or it could be single-family. So let me try to answer your first question. Although I don't know the entire village history, usually what happens, so zoning, the village is older than zoning ordinances. And so when it came time to put a zoning ordinance in place, my guess is that the village council at the time tried to develop the zoning districts based upon the uses that were in place at the time. And so some of these places where you see a couple of lots that are general business, B-1, right next to residential, were probably existing businesses at the time. Now, that doesn't mean their grandfather necessarily, although they could be. Grandfather would be if it was a residential district and they were awfully not conforming. What happened instead was the council looked at it, I presume, and said, "Look, this is a business area right here. This is operating as a business. Let's zone it as B-1 because we expect it to be continued to be used as a business for a period of time." So that's a guess. But I've seen that in many other communities as well. It seems to be what's going on here.
There is one? Anybody else? Going once? Going twice? Do you want to speak up? Now's a good time to do it.
Okay, the animal, you have the residential. If you, to present eggs, these eggs are going to go again. Are you wanting to have a few chickens? No. Put in that?
No. I've gone down that road so many times lately.
So why is that?
It's just...
I don't know, very interesting.
But actually, I have some information from NEMCOT. I'm a lady there.
Did you hear what?
The information being from NEMCOT, somebody sent me over there. She said...
NEMCOT, for those who don't know, is our regional planning agency for Northeast Michigan. And what they do, they have people who went to school with us, which none of us, I don't think, have a degree in planning and that sort of thing. So we depend on them and their expertise, and they write these plans for communities. They come into the community and they do surveys with the community to find out what's needed, what's wanted, and those sorts of things.
I think that's the essence of everything. And the question for self-made building states, you know, like everything driving flows. Little things like that all make a difference in the community as well as in everything. And I thought, oh, if it's done properly, then, you know...
If there were enough folks that came to the planning commission and said, you know, we'd like to see the zoning changed, realizing that the next-door neighbor may not like the smell of the chickens when the wind blows. Don't worry about that. I'm just sharing information. But if she has some, I might have to think about. It's a little spooky together.
I feel like we have a whole, you know, a whole flock of, you know, 150 chickens in one little lot.
Is there any other business owners that would like to share thoughts? I know there's a couple, at least two here that I know. If they would like to share their thoughts. And they both have vested interests right here in the village. One lives here and one lives just on the other side of the street. So if you have any thoughts or preferences, or please share.
I think that you've lost a lot of... People are kind of wondering how since the role of ACCOA happened, I think that that's maybe why you don't have as many people speaking up, because everything's still up in the air right now. We should have mentioned my name, I just did, I'm sorry.
That's where most of the comments will come. When I went back through and read the comments that we noted at the other meetings, 99.9% of them had been with the ACCOA, not the village's zoning ordinance, but the community's passion with how they felt about what was happening or not happening, as the case may be.
I'm just here to clarify.
Okay, very good.
Well, I think a lot of the people were concerned about the townhouses and stuff that would be possibly built. I think that was a lot of the concern in that. But, and that's what they... I think, at least for me, when you said you can't talk about any particular thing going on, that's what I took it as we were not allowed to bring up the townhouses.
I'm a real person. I know you are, but...
Yes, she is.
Yeah, I think that's where a lot of the people kind of went coy because we're not sure, are you allowed to bring up about the amount of housing that can be brought in all at one time? And what happens if these buildings don't have people living in them? What's gonna be the result of that? I guess that's a lot of my questions, but I think it is, I wasn't allowed to talk about.
Yeah, well, one thing, the ACCO A is the ones who got the grant. The village has no control over their board and the decisions that they make.
I understand that. However, the board does have a decision on how many, they're, they're gonna have a lot of property opened up. And then you can build as many townhouses or apartments or single-family dwellings as you want. I think that was some of the concern though. We get all these housing built and there's nobody to live in, what comes of that?
Well, I would say that the people who are willing to house this need to do it for this, their building, to know whether or not that's something that we can build. And I say we, meaning the county of Alphona, because it would be people come all over the county that will come in and possibly use, you know, the housing. It may not be just the village or Lincoln. It could be somebody who lives out in Portusville and, you know, for whatever reason, they need to be closer to Lincoln or whatever little reason might be. And that would be a good option. And, but I can't speak for other people. I can only guess scenarios.
I think a lot of the people, this is a grant, this is a grant. I think a lot of our concerns may be that, right, we, we are probably not a business person's problem, that's what it may be. I think a lot of us feel like we will be the ones holding the factors, not a company that's coming in to build. They're gonna take all the risk. Grant's different.
Well, the one thing that the village can do, and I, I would mention, yes, we probably will do when, um, when they bring their proposal, can't we, um, make it very specific as to how long it's going to take them to build it and they cannot leave it undone?
Yeah, I mean, so the question that's in front of the council is whether it's in the village's best interest going forward from the local standpoint to allow condominiums and townhouses, whether it allows apartments and multi-family dwellings within that district. Uh, obviously there are projects that are being contemplated right now. There may be other projects that we're not aware of and are being contemplated. Uh, and so, you know, we look at a particular project, if they're going to go forward, they have to present some information, a site plan and those sorts of things. It has to meet with the ordinance requirements. And so if there's still some element of control there, each project has to, has to go through a certain approval process through the village in order for it to, um, to become a reality. So, um, just because if this, if this ordinance change were approved, it wouldn't mean that it's just the wild west and people can do whatever they want. They, they still have to comply with the ordinance as it's written in, in their development of various properties. And, you know, that's really the point here is that we don't control what a private property owner does with their property. What we do control is how they might be able to develop. The key there is what's the best interest of the village going forward.
Did that help, Terry?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, I just got a question. I think I have another question on that. So I have a property and I decide I'm gonna put in apartments. And I'm a pri, uh, you know, I'm a private person. I get taxed according to what that property's value is. So assume, presumably, what I'm being taxed helps cover the extra expenses of providing, of the village providing fire and, and emergency services because, you know, when you get your, there it is, all, it's all like a tax bill when you get it. Without mentioning them, my question is, everyone is concerned about that if they're a 501(c)(3), can they rent, and this is probably a question for you, can they, are they gonna be in our tax base?
Nope.
So I, I think the answer is no. Um, I don't want to get into it much more than that because again, that's, and I'm not saying we, we can't talk about it. People should talk about it when we want to in public comment. But, um, again, we can't control how any property owner develops its property except to make sure that they're doing so within the guidelines of the ordinance as it exists.
Any other comments? Anything from the back? I know who it is. Yes, Terry.
Just real quick, and I'm, and I'm gonna leave it at this. Um, with, with the elephant in the room, I mean, you're talking maybe traffic down Barlow Road because you've got the school there. You've got the shop, is, you know, is that all been considered? Because, you know, if there's multi-family dwelling there, Barlow Road's gonna be quite the thoroughfare.
My?
I mean, yeah, I mean.
Yes, my, my understanding of the grant, one of the reasons that the ACCO A received it is because of its close proximity to the grocery stores, its close proximity to the school, its close proximity to the, um, health center, um, as well as you've got hardware, you've got, I mean, there's a lot of services right in that area. And they got points for that when, when they were applying for the grant. Because it, this way those folks don't have to travel as far to, to get the services that they need.
Well, but you're talking to you and not traffic.
I, I understand, I understand that.
That's.
That's why we put a center turn lane. Not because of this project, but because of how it's been developing. We extended the center turn lane down by, uh, uh, down in general because we knew it was going to get heavy. So we purposely did that in, in thinking about that. And that's exactly where these, they're talking about developing. And when you look at a senior, how far should a senior have to drive to get the services that they need? As, I mean, the state of Michigan is very generous in, in letting us drive probably longer than what many of us should. However, if, if we can help them to be able to do the things that they need to do and be active and do it in a central location, isn't that a good thing?
Yeah.
If, if, and not everybody wants to live in town, and I understand that. But for those who may, may have a challenge in some way, shape, or another, that it's not necessarily a bad thing.
All right, since nobody else is talking, you have that question.
Sure.
Okay, so the senior place over there on this, on town, over there off Watch Pass Lake, I believe it is. Um, is it, is it full? I'm under the impression it is not full. So we do have senior housing available already, do we not?
That I don't know. I, it's none of my business whether it's full or not. I don't go over there and ask. And that's privately owned.
I saw that they had a sign up that they, they had openings.
And can they name?
Yeah, but I'm, I'm just saying though, you know, that is another thing to look at. How often is that thing actually full? And do we need more, I guess, is another question. So.
I, I can't answer that.
Okay.
I'll be honest.
I'm gonna say it's a comment.
No.
It's a comment instead of a question.
Okay. Thank you. Yes, sir.
I do this with a great deal of reluctance because I didn't bring my plaid jacket. Ho- hopefully this could answer a few questions. Uh, the ACCO A, there's, there's a lot of misconception what's happening. There is going to be a senior center built. There are going to be a very few number of senior housing. ADA compliant, handicap accessible. There will be no townhouses, no apartments, no other housing. That's out of the picture. Uh, the ACCO A has 12 and a half million dollars, which sounds like enough to build the entire village of Lincoln. But it's not. Um, at today's cost, really doesn't buy that much. But we are gonna have a senior center. We're gonna have a small number of senior houses. There's gonna be some outdoor amenities. We'd like to have a pavilion, a gazebo, a nature walking path. And this depends on where the dollars run out. But if it eases anybody's mind, no townhouses.
Thank you, Leroy. I'm sure there's a lot of people in here that are going, phew. Any other further comments? Basically, we're just giving options. Yes, ma'am.
Good question, and it's, it's, oh, Natalie Goldstrom. I'm in Lincoln, but like a little north of the village.
She lives with me.
She's my daughter-in-law.
My concern was just about the sewage. And I don't know if this is the right meeting to bring that up at, but I heard we were maxed out. So I don't know how that's gonna work.
My understanding is they will be self-contained. Their water and septic system, which will accommodate what they're moving to. When, when Mr. Avery first came to the village, the first words out of our mouth was, "You are having a well and you are having a septic, correct?" Because our se- our sewer system does not cover the whole village. It doesn't. There's only a section of it that it covers. And we are at capacity. Um, and we're doing everything we can to keep that system healthy for as long as we can keep it healthy. We have septic tanks in places that are on it. And just like the septic tank in, for anybody who has one, you flush, you run the water and everything goes down into the septic field or septic tank. And then you got a grain field and everything drains out into the grain field. Well, the village has a common grain field. And we get permitted by, it was the DEQ, now it's Eagle. Pick, pick, pick an organization, whatever name they're going by right now. Um, but they give us a permit and they say we cannot exceed that permit number for our, our septic system that is within the village. So adding people to it, if, if it's already there and somebody's moving into that building, kudos, your honor. If you're building something new, not happening. It's just not able to, to take care of it. Yes, ma'am.
So if that's the case, that you're maxed now, if you change the zoning to allow more housing, will that not increase your use of the septic system that you don't have?
Now, yeah, it would, and so they would have to be self-served.
Oh, yeah. Well, technically we're not a self here.
Well, I mean, here's a lot of. When, when you take, there's, we have some, we have some empty buildings that don't have, but they still have a septic tank. And we have a health that tank. And, and assuming it's a thousand gallon tank, which is roughly what Mr. Krasny indicated to me when I commented, and then math, poor math skill. We can't add more septic tanks to what's already there. Now, if, if there is at least a probability that last one we get to do it now, then we have to call this septic tank back. Um, but some of the businesses that are wrong, some of the businesses are wrong, we have other ones that are going. So that's, that's not necessarily the case. Are there any other questions or comments that, that the public would like to, to bring forward? Um, if not, then we're gonna close the public comment a portion of it. And I will have Linda read the questions back and to the council. If something, somebody feels like they can answer, feel free to jump in. Um, and we'll, we'll do our best to address the things that have been brought up if we haven't already addressed.
And that's the next one?
Yeah, there are two more people. Yeah, would we do like to?
I'd be next, I might go next.
Yes, we, we have you and Scott and Billy, um, be next and Tom about. We have two Scots, Scott Rice and Scott Stevens. Um, and then Billy for the fire chief. Do you want?
I probably don't need, and I can probably get by. Am I okay? Um, so I wrote down a few notes on things I, I heard, but, uh, just, just in case anybody's aware, I'm the sheriff and I have, uh, law enforcement authority in the village of Lincoln. Um, I haven't heard anything zoning-wise or, uh, building-wise that's gonna tax my department to the limits where we can't, can't provide services in the village or anywhere in the county. Um, I heard that as a concern earlier. But, uh, I'd like to remind you that in the summertime, our population nearly doubles in Alphona County. I have the same staff I have then as I have now. Uh, as a matter of fact, we have two large parks, uh, campgrounds in Alphona County. One is Alphona Park with, uh, over 500 campsites and nearly that here is still State Park. We manage, we get by. I've never had the luxury of having the staff that we had when I was younger in my career. We're about three people short of that. Um, we're gonna get by. I don't think you're building any big, uh, high-rise projects here or anything that are gonna tax me to the limit where we can't, can't provide services. So I, I think I'd prefer to stay in my lane, and my lane is law enforcement, keep people, people safe. Uh, Mr. Rice is gonna probably talk a little bit about ambulance services and what he can provide to the village or, or, or what some of these plans may entail for him. But for me, not gonna, not gonna hurt our services. We're short, we always have been short, uh, the last five or six years, and we're probably gonna be for the next little while. Uh, we're still gonna provide the services that we have.
So I can get by with things now?
Yeah, let me tell ya. Is there any questions for me or anything? I, Sheriff's love to talk, and I'll get up here and talk all day about law enforcement topics, but that's, that's really not what we're for. Anybody from the village?
Thank you.
No problem. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sheriff. Okay, Mr. EMS, Scott Rice. Will, have Scott come up and talk about how it may or may not affect the ambulance service? Cause that was a concern someone had.
Can everybody hear me okay? Um, we're just like the sheriff's office. We're short of staff right now. I got people working overtime, uh, trying to cover and fill shifts. Last year we pulled 1,485 runs in the county. That also includes mutually to our neighbors, to our neighboring counties. The biggest concern that I have is if they're gonna put any townhouses, condos, multi-story buildings, is stairs. That they don't make the stairs big enough to get EMS in there. They don't put elevators in. So if we have what we call high utilization users, and we're going up and down the stairs, we can't lug that hundred-pound stretcher up and down the stairs. So now we gotta put them in a, what we call a stair chair, go down two and a half flights to get them outside and get them on the stretcher. That takes time and it takes manpower. Uh, my group is not the youngest group of individuals in the county. So if where's the chairs on them? That's the biggest concern that we have is elevator. And ample room inside the buildings to get, uh, to get our equipment in and out of the station. We're gonna start pulling a lot of EMS runs, upper levels, upper floors, apartments and things. That's gonna tax the harder department, because we're gonna need manpower. We'll always call it the manpower because to keep the long hands safely, and if he works safely, get that person to the point and get them outside, get them to the truck. On an average, it takes us about two and two and a half hours for a run, start to finish. Winter times here, it's two and a half to three hours for turnaround time to get back to the surface and go down the tile walk. The design may be a lot of elevator.
Any questions? Anybody have any questions? Yes, sir.
Yeah, everyone says, do we have, do we have one time?
Two, all the time, two.
Pretty much. Uh, we are running short of time. Do you have overlapping, uh, both parts of the runway right now? Or one end, one time back end?
So we never had to shut down, uh, a station because we were short personnel?
We have.
We have.
We have. And how often does this occur?
Five times a month. Usually it's the Wemby station where I gotta shut the Harrisville station down. Uh, there's over 2,000 paramedic medical jobs in the state of Michigan. Alpine is three or four people short, four or three people short. Uh, I got two medics out on injury right now, job-related injury. We're almost short of staff, unfortunately.
So your biggest problem that you're facing now is you cannot get people to come up here and work.
Correct. Twenty-five percent of our roster lives in the county.
Anybody else, Scott? Thank you, sir. We appreciate you coming out today. Mr. Billy? You're up. This is our fire chief, Billy Portis. Billy, do you want the mic?
Nope, should be good. I think everybody will hear me. Um, I guess the only comment that I got is, um, like Scott said, the only thing that's gonna affect us is just development of buildings and all their design. It's the only thing that's really gonna tax us. And the same boat, every fire department's working for people. We can't seem to find people that wanna be on the fire department anymore. And a lot of the issue is, is the day of the volunteers dead. You don't get volunteers for anything anymore. People only have interest in things, but other than that, it's not really gonna affect us too much, other than helping the EMS.
Thank you, Billy. Does anybody have any questions, Bill? Okay.
There's a few things that we can answer. I have control of the computer. So, Kathy had spoken, Kathy Schor spoke about, um, what we're looking at and discussed. She will discuss the difference between apartments and condos was, first from that. Terry Goldstrom was concerned about what's gonna do with the already-stretched first responder, fire department, police departments. Did we answer your question, Terry? Um, Nick was concerned about the sewer system. You know, things could be a potential cause for that. You good with that? Okay. Um, Kirk Belt? Kirk Belt question, um, what the zoning will do. If we re-zoned, we told you we wanted spots only, does that make sense? Kayla Spandry spoke. She's worrying about spots for those places around the wood. You're trying to address that. I think sort of we understand what that point is. Okay, we'll find the explanation over there. Then all of the places, it's been trying. Probably trying to find the computer. There was more questions from Nick and I have labeled all of ours. Sewer stuff. And answer that again, too, right? Rose, you spoke also about some concerns. Is there questions to answer? Trying to think if anybody is not pulling the rest of the work here again. It's here, I just can't find them.
Okay. Um, I want to thank everybody for coming this evening. Um, does anybody here on the village council have any comments that they would like to share with the public, um, this evening?
One comment that we talked about all the time, um, with, um, the sheriff with the EMS and the fire chief is, how is it going to pay for the extra calls, the extra time, the extra... We, we can't, can't really tell. You kind of get a general idea maybe of how many calls you're gonna have, but...
Was it was a nonprofit that they would be paying taxes? So we're getting...
Mm-hmm. If it was a nonprofit, right?
That was my question the first time that we discussed in here about this. How are we gonna pay for that?
Yeah, so Kathy builds apartments, closes their barns and builds apartments. Then she's paying taxes for the apartments. So that's gonna pay for the extra.
Yeah, I think, I think you're involved, was, was she asking how you pay your police calls?
No, you know, we have a fire department house, first responders.
Yeah, 'cause we don't, you know, if anybody was wondering, we don't build, build a townsite.
No, that's fair. No, that was, I just lumped everybody together and that was my fault.
And, and the taxes that the village collects within the village, that goes towards helping to pay for the equipment and the man-hours. And trust me, those, I don't know too many people that wanna run into a fire. That's, and we wanna make sure that, that they have the equipment that they need so when they're out there in the public and they're doing their job, trying to help whomever it is, whether it's out in the country or it's here in the village. We want them to be safe and we want them to be able to help the person that needs to help. Um, and one of the biggest expenses that we have is equipment. Um, we, how the village bills for, um, our time, and I'll be working on that this, probably this week sometime. Um, Mike Seraphin was our former chief. He keeps track of the number of runs, whether it's a fire run or a medical run in each township that we serve. And we service more than just the village. Um, we have Hardehaas Township, a pretty good chunk of it, a good chunk of Dustin Township, as well as Haynes Township and Harrisville Township, as well as the village itself. So we, when Mike keeps track of that for me, I, we have a formula for going back through and we say, "This is how much that run cost us this year to actually go out per man, or per person that we have to send out there and the truck. This is what it costs us to, to go do a run." And then I go down and I calculate whether it's a fire run or whether it's a first responder run. And depending on the number of runs made in each municipality, that's how we bill for those services. It's based on where it's at and what type of run it is. And then on top of that, I have asked the municipalities to provide us with a fee for equipment. And I have a formula for that. Um, Mike says it costs about four and a half percent of our budget, roughly. I don't have everything in front of me, so I might be misspeaking, but you have to set aside that kind of money each year so that as you need equipment, you're able to purchase it. And we do, this year we got a grant from the DNR for, I think, $5,000. And that helped to pay for 800 megahertz radios. And everybody's probably wondering, why do they need 800 megahertz radios? 'Cause there's places in the outlying areas that if you don't have them, you, you're not gonna hear what anybody has to say and you may not be able to help anybody. So we need a way for them to get out there. That's all part of the equipment that they need, just like these vehicles back here. Um, so, and then I, I figured out based on the number of runs from a municipality, I try to get it to them before they start working on their budgets so they know what it is. Now Dustin and, and, um, Hawes are a little bit different than the other two. Harrisville and Haynes does not have a village. Dustin and Hawes do. So I look at the percentage of Hawes Township at the village services. And that's the amount of money out of that village that I ask for. And the same way with Dustin Township. Realizing that we still have a little pocket of village where half of it is in Dustin Township and that is in, in the Hawes Township. So you have to take all those things into consideration when you're doing it, right? And look at the map and I say, "Okay, this is the percentage of, of what we've got and this is what I need from you to help us cover equipment costs." Um, the village does have a capital improvement plan. In that plan, um, this year, we were looking at replacing our first responder deal. But in speaking with our new fire chief, I'm not sure we need to do that right now. There's other equipment like SBCAs. I don't know how many people... Okay, SBCAs. I knew you were here for a bigger scale. Anyway, those, that's the breathing apparatus that the firefighters put on to go into a house that's burning so that they can breathe and they can go in and help people. And those are not cheap. And so we will probably be looking at purchasing some of those this year. And at some point in time, we'll probably have to purchase equipment, trucks or whatever. It's gonna be a while, but I'm sure it's not gonna last forever, most of us. So when there's money left, we have these savings accounts specifically for the fire department and the revenues that we collect. And it goes into that savings account so that when we need that money for equipment, regardless of what type of equipment it is, it's there to help. So and then we budget for all of that. So just, just so you know, there's, there's a process. And it's, it's not necessarily simple. But we do the best we can with the amount of money that we have to work with. And I have to thank, we have a couple of members from the DDA here tonight. And I gotta tell you, the village would not be able to do what the village does without their support. Um, they helped us. They, they bought, um, the compressor that refills their tanks for us. It was used, but it was still in good shape. So they were kind and they purchased that for us. When, when the village, their, um, our, our truck, the, this cop truck with the salting mechanism on the back of it, um, when it died, they helped us with that. We're a team. We, we, we try to work together and move the village forward. And if we don't do that, at some point in time, there isn't gonna be a village if we don't work together and look to the future, which is what this is about. Looking to the future, not just for now, but 20 years, 40 years from now, how it will affect us. So...
I, I do have questions that we have to break here. Yes. Hopefully, if you can hear me. Um, with the grant, is it specific? And what is it specific for? That I understood that in order to receive this grant, it had to be in a broader scope than just the senior center, apartments, whatever. So can you tell us what is in the scope? Because we're talking about whether or not we need senior housing or multi-dwelling houses or whatever it is that, that we need. If it's a requirement in that grant, then why are we arguing about this?
That's a good question. As much as we have been able to search the grant documents, it says housing.
Well, in order to get that grant, we are required to do some type of housing.
Yes. And we take that since we are a 501(c)(3) and the only thing we can do is for seniors, we can't build housing for just anybody. I know everybody wants housing for the, you know, for, for new deputies come in and teachers and all that stuff. And you know, those are worthy projects, extremely worthy projects.
But it's a requirement for the grant?
It is not.
It is not?
It is not.
Okay, that's part of what I wanted to know. Housing is a requirement?
Housing is. That's why we will have some senior housing.
Okay.
And they will be handicap accessible, ADA compliant.
Okay.
And the number will depend on how far 12 and a half million dollars will go.
Exactly, right.
Uh, you know, there, there's been stories out there that we wanna give the money back of what our... Uh-uh, we're gonna spend every dollar.
Right.
Uh, none of it's going back.
Well, as a member of this community, and I live in Lincoln, the fighting and the arguing and everything that's gone over this is, in my opinion, kind of embarrassing. I don't want this community to go down that road. You know, we have to look at what is best for this community, seniors, younger kids, the whole nine yards. You know, I don't wanna live in a community that's only geared at one demographics. We need everybody to advance and to progress in this community. And what I've seen and heard lately is not progression. It's, it's bad. So I hope that we can all get past this because this is not pretty for our community. And when more grants come down the pike, Lansing is gonna look at us in this area and say, "Forget it. They fought over this 12 million dollar grant. Do we really want to get them involved in any further grants? We gotta do what's best for the community in this fighting and bickering and everything that's got to stop."
Yes, and that's why the, the driving force behind us right now is that when we are done, we will have the greatest senior center you can imagine, senior housing as much as we can afford, and we will have some outdoor amenities. And, uh, it's, we're striving to be the best you've ever seen.
There was the talk about the community center. Is there anything like that going on?
A senior center is a community center.
So, so are outside people gonna be able to rent that? For a wedding, for...
Absolutely.
So that's hopefully gonna bring...
That's one reason I'd like to have a pavilion and a gazebo. It'd be great to have your wedding at the gazebo and your reception at the pavilion. Or, you know, graduations, family reunions.
Absolutely.
You know, whatever you can think of in a beautiful setting.
Okay. All right.
Any other questions or comments? Wow. I'm impressed. Thank you so very much for coming out this evening and, and the courtesy that we have shown each other. Um, this is important. We need to show our, put our best foot forward and make sure that the state of Michigan is going to be proud of what we do up here. And, and, 'cause I understand there was another negative article in the Detroit News this week, today. And I'm very disappointed. That's not who we are. And we should, we need to show that that's not who we are. We need to make sure the public knows that. So with that being said, if there's no one... No, there you go. No other comments? Um, does anybody else on the board have anything they wanna share? Okay. We will adjourn the meeting. And like I said, thank you again for coming out this evening and, and sharing your thoughts with us. We appreciate it.